I don't know. I didn't want to call meeting to order McDermott present has.
Ellis.
Here.
McDermott.
Present.
Slater.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Parker.
Here. And two, the open meeting compliance statement.
I am the time clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva School District number one in Woods County, Oklahoma certified that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, and place and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of this meeting.
Item three, the consent agenda, all of the following items with concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at a board meeting will be approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion of three A, addition of items of new business to the agenda.
We do. If you'll look back, we have twelve A, twelve B, and twelve C.
Okay.
And if with the board permission, I would like to do that right after six E. Excuse me, six D.
Three B, the minutes from the May first, two thousand seventeen, regular board meeting.
I didn't see any problem with anybody else.
Yes, sir.
Three C, approval of the treasury report on the status of funds and investments.
Okay. If you go to that first one, you can see that total monies right now, we have right at eight million, five, five-six. And summary of financial activities for the senior achievement, you can see that also. And then our open investment ledger, it's all current, it looks like to me. The main revenue. That's Terry's pretty low general fund revenue. You can see that as of this point, we've collected one oh four percent of the projected budget, so we're ed, so we still have some and they are mainly some of the federal special ed programs and those types of things. And then the last one, you'll see where we have projected that at this point in time, that it looks like that we could carry over seven million, nine hundred eighty-five, one twenty-two, eighty-eight. Now, I will tell you that we do not have all of our summer projects in cover because we're just now getting those with quotes and so forth. But won't be that high, to be real honest with all of our summer projects. And when we get into the warrants and so forth, you can see what we've already encumbered for the summer projects and so forth. So, pretty good standing with our money. I still understand that, of course, the oil and gas is going up, but still drilling in the area and still coming in and so forth. So, we're really good shape at this point in time.
Three D, approval of activity fund report.
If you look at the year-to-date, you can see where all of our activities are in pretty good shape at this point in time. We will be adding some money later on because we finally got the concessions all divided up, going to the different activities and so forth. But activity is really good shape at this point in time.
Three E, approval of activity fund reports.
Both we have two. We've got two for Effett Bag. They're gonna be making projects throughout the year to sell. I know at state convention, we sold an OSU clock and so forth. So, and then, couple of weeks ago, they hosted a fishing tournament. And those proceeds will be given to the different fire departments around this area as a donation. Don't have all the figures on that yet at this point in time.
Three F, approval of activity fund enter account transfers.
And you can see that during our basketball concession, those are the different organizations worth a different amount of time, and that is what they will be receiving into their activity account for working concessions during basketball. And what's amazing is we don't keep a total of those dinners, but I'll bet you those dinners were all about five thousand dollars too, because it's amazing that it's very comparable to what we sell in the concession and what they take in each and every night we have a dinner. It's hard to believe, but that's true.
Did we see the concessions go down or anything?
No, not since we did that, to be real honest with you, Jane.
It's in our service.
The thing, I think we probably saw less people at our basketball games this year than what we've had in the past, so that would be, you know, that type of situation part of it. Child nutrition. Any other questions on that? Excuse me.
Three G, approval of child nutrition report.
Any questions on that? If I add it correctly, our income was five hundred thirty-three thousand, three eighty-four without the labor expenditures were a hundred fifty-four thousand something. And that doesn't count repair or stuff like that that we charge too because of the milk thing will go down or refrigerator or something like that. But, you know, and everybody's wondering, are we gonna go to an outsourced next year or not? Not at this point in time. We're still gonna look at it, but, and if we do outsource, our people will be hired. It comes up every time we talk about child nutrition. There's not been any decision made whatsoever. And then surplus ban. We have several old instruments listed there. And Mrs. Broad did a great job getting this information. And the students that we had helping her, they're either cost too much to repair or can't get them repaired or whatever. Karen, you know how that, you know, Jane does too, that's just sometimes you can't. So, those are gonna be surplus, and we'll try to give them away or sell them or whatever we could do. We do not want to hold them on very long, just store them something. Any questions on any of those reports?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, those items referenced in three B through three H.
I'll second that.
Ellis.
Hi.
McDermott.
Hi.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Item four, vote for purchase order conferences for the following funds, grant by seventeen, listed four A through four D.
Okay, if you look at your conference register, I'll go over some of those. Purchase order seven fifty-five, that was to put a monitor in Tim's office and also to repair a camera in the hallway so that we can see people coming in and out of the door. Okay, and then seven fifty-nine, we wanted to buy those cafeteria tables that fold up so that we can fold them up and do a better job of cleaning. So, that's what those are. And then seven sixty-three, those are, I believe, seventy-five telephone instruments for the school district. We're changing over to voice override, and those are the instruments, and we were on them, so we're replacing where phones are at this point in time, and we're not adding. There's a couple more businesses in there also that we'll talk about. Okay. And then seven seventy-eight, phone system upgrade. That's software, that's, and there'll be another one down below for us, eight thousand dollar file server, get rid of five that we have and go to one. And so, that's everything to do this voice override. And so, but it's also some internets and email. I guess we're gonna go to the great cloud in the sky, and we're going to Google, and we're going to all those things that I don't know about, but it's.
Really?
Yeah. But it's gonna be a lot better. We're not gonna have the power failures that we're having at this point in time, and so that's another cost there. And then, you know, treat solutions, seven eighty-three. Hopefully, that's all the chemicals we need to get ready for school next year, the wax, all those types of things. Okay. Midwest music, purchase order eight hundred, actually buying, do you know what we're buying, Kyle? Have you talked to Mrs. Broad?
Yes.
The walk-in French horns, what are they called?
Melphons.
There you go. We're buying some of those and two, I believe, and some drums and those types of things. And we surplus some of those. You like the French horn, didn't you play the French horn?
I know, I'm kind of envious. I, no, I have marched the old-fashioned kind.
Did you?
Yeah, yeah. I'm old, so. I was lucky for giving you a mel.
And then we're trading in our Moab pickups, and you can see the cost of the new seventeen plus one suburban, they're eight-ten, eight- eleven, eight-twelve. Traded in the old impala driver's ed car, we'll move the old suburban to the driver's ed car for next year. And then ABC, those are some bus repairs on our big diesel activities. And then eight-thirty-two, Ross Transportation are some summer repairs on our bus fleet that we lease each and every year.
What about the repairs on the football field?
Oh, we're gonna have a driveway down into the football field, it's probably concrete, with a walk sidewalk to the side for that amount of money from integrity.
I didn't want to skip that.
Thank you.
I did not know. I kinda knew, but I didn't.
Kinda knew.
But I'm very thrilled that we have that.
And there's some other things that we're going to be covering there, everything, as soon as we get all the clothes, carpet, bathrooms, insert lights at Lincoln and some of those types of things. So, one thing that we will be looking at, don't know what the cost will be, meeting with O G and E tomorrow, and we've been having some power failures at the high school of Lincoln off and on, and they think that we're gonna have to have a new grid. So, we're gonna discuss that tomorrow. So, I don't know what that's gonna cost.
Maybe my life's a bitch. Blame the high school on that. When my electric just went out yesterday. Did yours, Mr. Martin?
Briefly.
Blame the high school.
I don't know if we could have heart care.
I can. I'm somebody that has my troubles in my life, so.
I was sure thankful for all of her battery backup computers.
Bet she were.
So, those are our conferences for this month. Any questions on that?
What about seven eighty-five?
Okay. Let me get it right. Who's it to?
Gabbard.
Gabbard Communications.
Oh, that's our new website communications. Gabbard is doing a lot of schools, very modern and so forth. So, they'll maintain it, do all that for us, so that we can keep up to date and so forth. So, that's our annual cost for that.
Does that send notifications out to parents, too?
I believe, Tiffany, if I'm not wrong, that we can get rid of our blackboard and send all that communication out. So, that phone sequence that we've had in the past will go through Gagnon, go through this cloud in the sky again, and some of those things. So.
So, is that an annual fee?
Is that gonna be annual that much?
Yes, and that's also a custom app for Android and iPhones.
That's great.
And they'll keep it up?
Mm-hmm. We're gonna have probably Pam in here be the coordinator for the school district, so anything that needs to be added or anything, she will coordinate that with them. Schools will coordinate with Pam. And so, we got one handed to. We don't wanna poke that cloud too much. We don't want to get more rain. Anything else? Eight oh nine, actually gonna use smart boards and the math forms, with all this new curriculum in up there. We're gonna put them up there. Is that right?
Yes, we are.
You know about cloud too, huh?
Okay.
I'm a little more familiar than.
Everybody. Any other questions on the general account? Okay, building? Just more money for treat solutions for more chemicals and so forth. Okay, child nutrition. Mid-America wholesale, just food and supplies. The one thing that we are going to utilize in nutrition next year is our buying power through food services. And we are a member of this organization, and I don't know how many schools, but we should give a lot better prices next year if we stay with them. So. Okay. Gifted fund, nothing this time. That's all we have.
I make the motion to approve purchase order of conferences four A through four D. I mean, no gift to fund in heaven thing tied to it this time.
Six, sorry. Kane.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Hi.
Ellis.
Hi.
Item five, superintendent's report.
Okay, I have some resignations. Mr. Biesmacher has resigned from the concession coordinator, and that person is in charge of making sure that we've got people working concessions, buying the concessions and so forth. So, we're looking for somebody for that. And then Cassie Ak, still in those jobs, she will not be a fair professional next year for us. And then Paul Duncan has resigned as a science teacher, and hope to fill that tonight later on in the board meeting. He will be going to E. Okay, reassignments. We've got J.C. Heaton's gonna be the middle school counselor. Kenny Andre is coming from the high school to be the middle school librarian, but she will stay as the yearbook sponsor and continue with that position. And then Miss Madonna Durkey will go from Lincoln secretary to the middle secretary. And Madison is interviewing people tomorrow for that position. Hopefully, by the twenty-ninth, we'll have those people. Really didn't have a whole lot of legislative update. We've got a budget supposedly. I don't know if the constitution is going to be checked on that, and they're gonna have to go into a special session or not. No teacher pay raises taken out of that. I think overall, according to the papers and from what I hear, COSA, education did get a one percent increase in the budget, but I don't know how they're gonna get it. Communications. I'm gonna let Tim talk about school profile. We got this right after the last board meeting. So, and this is our annual quality and accountability. And I will tell you, we're going to base a lot of this information on what we're doing next year with curriculum and mapping and so forth. And I think he's got a couple of examples for you.
So, the report that you have has an attachment that is a little bit different than what our state report card that you'll see supposedly in October. This takes into account community, demographics, and then your teacher demographics also, but it's still basically looking at your same test scores, although it is from a year ago. So, to tell you, I guess, how we would address some of those needs, and just to kinda share, one of the things that we're doing with our curriculum mapping is we ask all of our teachers to prepare an overview map for their subject area and grade level. So, what I gave you is math from pre-K through our senior year. And our teachers have done an outstanding job working on these. They spend a tremendous amount of time working on these, and we're real proud of them. What this will allow us to do is when you look at those Office of Accountability report cards, you can see that it looks at different benchmarks and it tracks through the year. This is gonna allow us to go back and review what we're teaching, when we teach it, and see if we need to make adjustments as a staff. So, part of that vertical alignment within our district. So, any questions about that?
Have y'all had a chance to look at that accountability grade?
And again, I want to emphasize, that's not, it's two years ago information, okay? So, it's kinda hard to get information and plan and prepare when it's as old as it is when we get it. So, we hope, you know, with our, with our other report card that we get, that is more current because that's previous year, although we don't get it till October or November, which we need early. Thank you.
Very comparable to last year's scores, or maybe three years ago, to be real honest. Any questions on that? Okay. CSI plan. Trying to gather some information for public schools, and one of the things that the end of public schools did on their bond issues and everything, they got the kind of projection of their enrollment and all that. And this is done by Oklahoma School Board, the K twenty center, and kinda outlines your strategy in your community, and what you want done and so forth, and they'll work with you. After a couple of conversations, I finally found out that the cost was like forty thousand dollars to do this. And two years ago, when we started strategic planning, we did it ourselves and so forth. The only thing we probably didn't get was the projected enrollment and how many people that we were gonna have here in the next ten years and so forth. So, I just thought I'd give you that information. And we've got a bond issue that's gonna mature in two thousand nineteen. We need to think about, you know, what we're gonna do. So, if you wanna go that way, we can discuss and have them come talk to us and so forth on that. But that's just some information for y'all to look at, see what you wanna do. Okay. And then we are our special education program. We are compliant and got the letter, and you can see that in my communications. And you bet. Ms. Lovelace works very hard to get all those reports in on time and does a great job with them.
Do you bring those?
I don't give a shit.
I print them off. They're in a file.
Your to-be-command.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
You know, we've tried everything possible to move kids around and everything so that we wouldn't have to get portable classrooms. And it's not gonna work because we've got to have some special need programs, and we're just out of room. Even with continuing to have a pre-K at Longfoe, we're going to have to have at least two classrooms next year at Washington to make everything work. This company that you have the information on is part of our buying system to where we do not have to bid it out there on the state. We have to contract. If you read the news script lately, Berniton just got one of those buildings. And then we can purchase this for seventy thousand dollars, or we can lease it. I would recommend to the board that we go ahead and buy it. And if you can imagine Washington's playground there on the west side, where the cafeteria has that wide concrete pass and then the fence, sidewalk goes all the way into the new library. If we, we'll have room just to put it on the other side of the sidewalk and just move the playground twelve feet, kinda square it off a little bit. We're not losing a whole lot of room, and we can put it right there. We've got sewer and water coming right off of that building there, and electricity will go there too, so.
So, it's two classrooms?
Two classrooms.
Is that seventy K each or so together?
Together, one bill.
Sixty-two.
And that's with bathrooms, and that's with handicap, accessible, ADA, all of those things that we need. And the only thing that we need is a building permit from city offices to be able to do that. Check with Brian Miller today, he's just a fire chief. So, I think that's the only way we can do it and make our kids safe and not have any stage rooms and different small areas, or taking a Title I room and building a wall in between it, making it two small rooms and those types of things. So, we're going to contract with Ramtech and get that building so that we'll have it for the start of school.
This year?
Yes, sir. I think once we sign the contract and everything, I think within thirty days, it'll be here, and then we'll have a few days to hook it up with sewer and electricity. So, we should be in good shape for school.
How's it heated and cooled?
Ownself heating and cooling. I talked to Kyle over at Woodward, and they've had four of those for years. And talked to Mr. Elliott. Nobody wants it, per se, but they believe this is a good product and a good company, so. And then I told you about O G and E, have a meeting tomorrow, so we'll see what that has to entail and see if it comes back. So, that's all I've got to report. Mr. Ellis.
Any questions? Item six, items of current business.
Item six, Items of Current Business. Six A, Discussion with Possible Board Action. Offer of Employment to Shane Peely on a prorated principals' contract for the remainder of FY 17.
We've hired him before next year, but he's gonna be working in June a little bit and we wanna be able to pay him for his work in June, so I would recommend that we hire Shane with this.
Prorated?
Proration, yes.
Is he released from his contract at Berniton?
He will be Friday. And when we check with the lawyers at Oklahoma School, they don't have to be released. They can work multiple jobs as long as everybody agrees, so that's.
Will.
Yeah. Surprised us too.
Has he started his coaching duties?
Yes, he has. Yes, he has.
I saw him.
Second. Ellis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Aye.
Six B, Discussion with Possible Board Action. Offer of Employment to E.S.Y. Services for applicant number one, certified personnel for the remainder of FY 17.
We're very fortunate that Becky Houston is a speech pathologist and she has went and come in and contracted with us for the remainder of the summer for our special needs students because we have one child that needs at least 30 hours of makeup from this year that we didn't give because of absences and so others. So the next two items will be involved with Becky on doing the summer special ed and then six C will be to add her to our staff for the 2017, 2018 school year. And Becky has been working for Integris and she Skypes a lot of her, is that right?
Not Skype.
Okay.
It's not.
Is it with the cloud?
Well, she was in the cloud, I didn't know.
So it's like video conferencing.
Okay, video conferencing.
So I've been seeing kids from the Panhandle for.
All the way out to Boy City and.
Yeah, Bell Key, so I've had a case load of about 40 to 50 the past 15 years.
So she comes with experience and we're very pleased and happy to add her to our staff. My recommendation would be to hire her for the summer speech for special needs and also six C for the 2018 school year. You'll have to vote on those individuals, right?
I have a motion on six B.
Ellis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Six C, Discussion with Possible Board Action. Offer of Employment on a one-year temporary contract in E.S.Y. Services for applicant number one, certified personnel for FY 18.
Make a motion that we void her for the school year next year.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Ellis?
Aye.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Very happy to be here.
We're very happy to have you.
I would have to say. I was the only speech therapist.
For a lot of years, weren't you?
Well, I'm a product of speech therapists.
When did you carry work for schools?
I don't know.
'Cause 1975 was the first year for the special need rules and regulations and so. I didn't know for sure.
In the seventies, 'cause I remember doing an interview on the radio with him in the seventies.
I graduated in '66 and they're there. How many do we have now?
This will be our third one. We have right at 60 speech students without the new pre-K, Head Start, those kids. And again, what happens is that we're within our limits with the law on the numbers, but because of illness or activity or whatever, we had one child miss 30 because that teacher was gone and we just didn't have enough time to make those up. So we can kinda cover for each other and those types of things, so that's where I need and our kids will get more services, which is neat.
Sixty, Discussion with Possible Board Action. Vote to offer employment for FY 18 to applicant number two, contingent upon receipt of an Oklahoma Teaching Certificate effective prior to August 14, 2017.
I'm gonna let Mr. Potter introduce Mr. Price, talk about him a little bit.
I'm beyond excited that he's gonna join our staff and be our band director for the next school year. We're working through some certification things and different things like that, but Kyle has a passion for what he does that stood out in an interview. And he came in and really is passionate about what he does. And he's had some experience with the OSU Band and working as a clinician for different bands throughout the state to come and do those kinds of things. And he has an MBA and he thought he wanted to be a teacher a long time ago and he thought he wanted to go make some money and he realized he kept being drawn back to kids. And so he said, you know, he's got a chance to go make some money with an MBA somewhere, but his passion is kids and we're fortunate to have him, pending your approval, to come and lead our band kids. And he'll need some shaping and molding and those kinds of things, but he's got a passion that is unsurpassed.
Kyle went to school at Western Heights, went to UCL and then was lured to OSU to play the Trotbona tomorrow, so.
Enforcement.
So anyway, you know, but he has some experience, been working with Channer bands for the last two years and he's been a judge and so forth, so we are very happy to make the recommendation to the board with certification approval that he be the band director for the 2017, 2018 school year.
I make a motion that we approve six B.
I second that.
Ellis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
And go to 12A?
Yep.
Okay. I think you're back on the spot here for English.
Okay.
For English.
You've been real lucky in the last three weeks of having quality people just follow my lab. And next you'll find that Crystal Merle has come and applied for a job. She's worked in the Alba community for a few years now, a very integral part of what we do, has kids in our school district, and she's actually a certified teacher, doesn't have any teaching experience, but has a teaching certificate and has already turned her resignation in. Whether she got a teaching job or not, she already had turned her resignation in because she was gonna be involved with the school. She said, "I'm gonna work at the school whether it's as a teacher or as a sub. I'm gonna be around kids and do what I do and do that." And once again, like I said, I've been real fortunate. These people have just come to me and come to Alba schools and they have a passion about kids and so my recommendation would be to hire Mrs. Merle to join our staff at the high school and teach sophomore level English and maybe a few freshman classes and we're gonna keep her busy.
I like a motion that we accept her as one-year temporary contract for fiscal year 18.
Second. Kane?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Ellis?
Aye.
One more.
Okay. One more. And she couldn't be here tonight. She has been out of state. We're gonna hire Mary Tyree. She has been working at the middle school as a para. She has a master's degree in biology and we have a science job open with the resignation of Coach Duncan and so she has some certification issues too, but we feel like we can get her an emergency certificate to teach science because of her degree and those kinds of things and we will have her do that science job. And I said, "She just flew in and she said, 'My plane doesn't land much until 5:00. I said, 'Well, drive fast.'" She said, "She apologized for not being able to be here," but she, when I started calling around and asking about her, I talked with Mrs. Lovelace who, and she said she's a rock star. That was the way she described her and she has done really good things. I talked to the mother of the little girl that she was a para for and said, "Oh, my gosh, I hate to lose her." And so, but she technically isn't gonna lose her because that little girl's gonna come to the high school and now Mrs. Tyree will be at the high school. And it won't be in the same capacity, but she'll still be there for her to kinda lean on and be a familiar face and try to make that transition successful for that little special needs girl too. So I would recommend that you hire Mary Tyree to teach science at the high school.
And this is contingent upon her getting her certification, so.
I would make that motion.
I would second it.
Kane?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Ellis?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Y'all can stay or you can go or whatever you'd like to do.
We're not offended.
No, we're not. Welcome.
Thank you.
Are you staying tonight or are you going home? Be careful.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
And 12C?
Right now?
12C.
Okay.
If you'll go down on the computer, you can see the application for temporary appropriations. Current associates usually give this to us a little earlier, but they're not gonna give anybody the appropriations until you sign a contract with them. So they finally got the contract and sent it to us. So this is basically, what you see here is figured in 70% of the estimated needs is what our temporary appropriation of 12,703, 1,774, 30,41 and so forth. So what, Terry, October, we'll finally probably get our final. So this allows us to operate July until we get full appropriations. So I'd recommend that we approve this temporary appropriations.
I make a motion that we approve the temporary appropriation for fiscal year 18.
Second. Ellis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes. Kane?
Yes.
Going back up to six E. Discussion with Possible Board Action. Vote to approve the following contracts for FY 18. Listed 6E1 through 6E4, do we need to vote on each individual one?
You can vote on them, I think, as a whole if you need any explanation. Of course, Charlotte doesn't care of her auditor, have been for years. Precision Laboratories comes in and they will do our asbestos and we've been using them for years. City of Alba is our resource officer. The one thing that we have changed is we're upping the hours to eight hours rather than just six. So we're gonna be using two different resource officers, same amount of money per hour, 3383, I think, something like that. And then Woods County Board of Commissioners Contract Services. Those are all normal contracts that we do each and every year and I'd recommend to the board that we continue.
Make a motion that we approve six E1, 2, 3, and 4.
Second. Kane?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Ellis?
Aye.
Six F, Discussion with Possible Board Action. Vote to approve the open student transfers for FY 18.
These students were granted emergency last year, so they had filled out the open, so they've been in our system. So I'd recommend and didn't see any problem with any of the transfers. So I'd recommend to the board that we approve.
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Ellis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Certainly.
Six G, Discussion with Possible Board Action. Vote to approve a resolution for schools and libraries, libraries' universal services for FY 18. This resolution authorizes filing of the Form 471 applications for funding FY 18 and the payment of the applicant's share upon approval of funding and receipt of services.
That's RE rate and it affects our technology, our telephone, all of that, and we've been involved with that for years, so I'd recommend that we continue with this resolution.
I'll move. Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Ellis?
Aye.
Kane?
Yes.
Six H, Discussion with Possible Board Action. Vote to approve the OSSBA membership for FY 18.
Oklahoma School Board does a lot of things for us, keeps us involved, and I think belonging to that is very important for this board, so I would recommend that we approve our membership again for next year.
So moved.
Second.
Ellis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Six I, Discussion with Possible Board Action. Vote to approve out-of-state travel for AHS students to attend the Shofar Camps of America in Illinois.
We have been sending students to Illinois for years and the only difference is Connor Cummings is going along as an adult to go as a sponsor and she's also gonna be involved in the camp it looks like, to me. I would hope that the board would approve this request.
I'll move.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Ellis?
Aye.
Six J, Discussion with Possible Board Action. Vote to approve the revised extra duty schedule for FY 17.
You can see those are in red. Wanted to add a middle school director of athletics to help with concession, scheduling the football, those types of things, so that doesn't fall completely on spec, me. And then all of our summer coaches that we've been talking about for several months. I will tell you that Mr. Argon and I went up to the first day of summer pride and what age group? Not high school, everything but?
Eight.
Never see it be a.
Third through.
Only the third grade to eighth grade.
Had over 80 kids in it. Reporter on our softball camps had about 30. At softball, baseball, we had about 30. So families should take advantage of what we did. So these are the revisions and so forth, so I'd recommend to the board that they be approved.
Do we have job descriptions for most of these?
Yes, we have hours and how many hours approximately working, what they're gonna be doing. Is that what you're asking?
No, for instance, like we added the middle school athletic director.
No, we don't have one yet on that, but we will have one. Yes.
Do we know who's telling you? Did you say?
I know that Mrs. Martini has already talked to Mr. Hooper about doing that and being in charge of scheduling and concessions and so forth, so at this point in time, that's the only one I know that she's talked to.
I'm moved that we approved the revised extra duty schedule for fiscal year 17.
And will I have to do the same thing with tires? I second revised athletic.
Kane?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Ellis?
Aye.
Six K, Discussion with Possible Board Action. Vote to approve the revised extra duty assignments for FY 17.
And those are the changes due to paying coaches in the summer. But I'd recommend to the board these changes as presented.
I make the motion to approve six K, the revised extra duty assignments for fiscal year seventeen.
Second. Ellis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Six L, Discussion with Possible Board Action, Vote to Approve the Support Personnel Salary Schedule for FY eighteen.
We had a discrepancy on aides and pares and so forth, and aides were doing the same thing, the pares, the pares were working with special need kids. So we want to get rid of the aide and just call everybody a para because they're basically doing the same thing, okay? And then the other thing that we're doing is giving the administrative discretion on reviewing after six months and so forth on some pays down below with site secretaries and so forth. We think this is fair and we think this is what we needed to do because basically our aides were being cheated. So I would make motion to the board that they approve this salary support for 2017-2018.
I make the motion to approve the Support Personal Salary Schedule for seventeen- eighteen.
Second. Kane?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Ellis?
Aye.
Six M, Discussion with Possible Board Action, Vote to Approve the Revised Extra Duty Assignments for FY seventeen.
And those are the changes due to paying coaches in the summer. And Ash Liers, that they'll be working with kids. And I will tell you that we will probably have to add a speech and a band during August if they're going to have clinics. But I'd recommend to the board these changes as presented.
I make the motion to approve six K, the revised extra duty assignments for fiscal year seventeen.
Second. Ellis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Six L, Discussion with Possible Board Action, Vote to Approve the Support Personnel Salary Schedule for FY eighteen.
We had a discrepancy on aides and pares and so forth, and aides were doing the same thing, the pares, the pares were working with special need kids. So we want to get rid of the aide and just call everybody a para because they're basically doing the same thing, okay? And then the other thing that we're doing is giving the administrative discretion on reviewing after six months and so forth on some pays down below with site secretaries and so forth. We think this is fair and we think this is what we needed to do because basically our aides were being cheated. So I would make motion to the board that they approve this salary support for 2017-2018.
I make the motion to approve the Support Personal Salary Schedule for seventeen- eighteen.